All right, it's five, I have 5:30. We will open this study session of the Cherry Hills Village City Council on Tuesday, October 6th. And the first item, major item for tonight's discussion is the 2021 proposed budget. Jessica?
Good evening, Mayor.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Before we begin with the budget presentation, there were a few items that were removed from the 2021 proposed budget just before I made copies for the council packets. Unfortunately, the items that were removed from the Arapahoe County Open Space Fund and the Kat Anderson Fund are not reflected in the long-range forecast that was included in the packet. So I've provided the one-page summary of the long-range forecast on the dais for your review. That is updated. So the budget was, the budget was fine. It had those deductions. It was the long-range forecast that did it. So the updated one is on the dais. So with that, due to the unusual circumstances surrounding COVID-19, the 2021 budget presented extraordinary circumstances for staff when creating the budget. The proposed budget includes assumptions that may be adjusted prior to the first reading. These assumptions are the assessed property value, assessed property values for property tax revenue, the city's medical and dental insurance premium increase, and the city's workers' compensation policy increase. Typically, staff has already received preliminary assessed values from Arapahoe County prior to the study session. This information will be released from Arapahoe County by October 13th and will be updated in time for the first reading. Based on a preliminary estimate provided by the city's insurance broker, an 8% increase for the city's health insurance policy and a 5% increase for the city's dental insurance policy have been included in the proposed budget. Staff anticipates receiving the final numbers by the end of October, so this information will also be updated by first reading in November if necessary. The third estimate that has been included in the proposed budget is for the workers' compensation policy. The final policy information should be provided by Pinnacle Insurance in time for first reading The proposed 2021 budget is a balanced budget with revenues and expenditures totaling $7,379,481. This is a 1% decrease from the 2020 adopted budget. The ending fund balance for the general fund is projected to be just over $10.8 million. 75% of the proposed general fund revenue will come from taxes and fees, and 36% of this is made up from property tax revenue. 13% comes from licenses and permits, 5% from intergovernmental fees, 5% from charges for services, and 2% for miscellaneous revenue. This slide reflects the history of property tax revenue collection from 2008 to projections for 2021, along with the assessed property values for houses in the city for that same time period. These projections were made using the estimated information provided by Arapahoe County earlier this year. The expenditure percentage breakdown by department is 49% for the police department, 24% for administration, 15% for public works, 8% for community development, 3% for non-departmental divisions, the village crier and RIT division, and 1% for the judicial department. In a typical year, staff would remove items from the budget and present the balanced budget for council approval without detailed explanation on what was increased or removed. Because 2021 presents unusual budgeting challenges, staff thought it would be helpful to explain what items were removed from the budget to get feedback from city council. The feedback received from council will be used if additional items need to be removed or added back in based on property tax revenue estimates or health and dental policy increases. One of the biggest items removed from the proposed budget were merit increases for staff. In the 2020 adopted budget, merit increases for staff were up to 2.5%. In the proposed 2021 budget, merit increases have been completely removed. Cost of living increases for salaries have also been reduced. In the 2020 adopted budget, cost of living increases were 2.1%. In the proposed 2021 budget, cost of living increases are 1%. Employee tuition reimbursement requests were reduced from $20,000 to $10,000. And several other items such as equipment and training for the public works department and a rifle and joint public safety facility maintenance for the police department were removed from the budget. The total amount removed from the 2021 proposed budget was $196,866. Looking ahead to the first reading, if health and dental increases are higher or property tax revenue is lower than expected, staff would recommend cutting discretionary items from this list. If revenue is higher than anticipated, staff would recommend increasing employee cost of living in lieu of adding other items from this list. At this time, I can pause the presentation to see if council has any feedback related to the general fund, or I can continue with the capital and small funds. It's to you.
Jessica, at the end of this, you're going to go through your presentation, and then we're going to circle back, and we're going to give you feedback in terms of like what, these are good cuts, these, we disagree with the cuts, et cetera.
Sure. Ideally, yes, we would get feedback from you as to the cuts that have made or the cuts, this list, what was kept into the budget that could be additionally cut if needed. We will obviously have questions after the presentation. I just wasn't sure if you wanted to talk about the general fund now. Since the majority of the cuts were from the general fund, there weren't very many cuts from the parks fund or the small funds.
I had a, can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
A quick question. When you talk about these things being cut, are they being reduced or just outright eliminated? Like, we're not going to clean the joint public safety facility anymore?
No.
Nobody's emptying the trash for another year.
Nobody's taking out the trash. Some of them were, were maintenance that would happen twice a year. We might have cut those down to annual, so it'll only happen once. The floors polished usually happens once. We completely cut that out. So we're saying what was cut, like with employee tuition, we cut 10,000 of that. We'll still have tuition. We have two employees that have requested tuition reimbursement, so they would split. If this passes, they would split the $10,000. So there are some things that are in there. It's just this was what was cut out.
Just to clarify, the things that were, the maintenance that were cut are outside maintenance that we contract. That's not our normal maintenance, just to be clear.
And then for the tuition reimbursement, how, what is our policy on that? Do we, I mean, I wouldn't want to say to somebody that was planning on it, oh, sorry, this year, you don't get, you know, what's our policy around tuition reimbursement?
So the policy says, subject to the budget, the two people that have requested it, one has started knowing, he started earlier this year, so he hasn't received tuition at all this year because he didn't make it last year. He didn't make a reimbursement request. The other person knows that it's subject to what can be included in the budget. The policy says that they get up to $10,000, so the per, generally, usually it's per person can request up to $10,000, but again, subject to what's in the budget. So if we had those two individuals, I would let them know as early as I can. And both of them are aware of the situation right now, knowing that there's two of them. We've got it down to 10,000, and they might have to split it. But if it's something that gets completely cut, I would let them know that as well.
So normally, it's, and it, is it, it's up to $10,000, and that's not contingent necessarily upon, that could be 100% of their tuition, or, so it's not, you know, 50% of your tuition or up to 10,000, it's just up to 10,000?
It's up to $10,000, but based on grades. So if you receive an A, you get 90% for that course.
Okay.
And that's for tuition and books. So they have to pay for the tuition, they have to pay for the books, and then they have to show me their grade, and then they'll get 90%, 80% with a B, 70% with a C, and then we don't do anything below a C, so.
So $20,000, as far as you know, would fully fund that. And I guess, you know, what is the possibility of, since this is for next year, of somebody else coming forward then and saying that, does that?
We generally tell them they have to do it during, before we start the budget process. So if anybody else wanted to do it, they've missed the boat. They had to tell us before now.
Okay.
If I could just add one comment on to this. We actually discussed this specific cut. If the property tax revenue estimates come in lower than we're planning on today, and we need to go to the next list to cut even more, you know, I would recommend against any more cuts on this line and choose some other items first. It's one thing to cut an existing benefit, it's another to eliminate the benefit for a year. And so, you know, it's certainly a part of our package that when we think about employee retention, it's a benefit that we want to be able to continue to tout as what makes it special to work here. So I would, I would look to some other line items first before cutting this one all the way down to zero if we needed to find additional money.
Okay.
That's a good point, too. Do we know when the county is going to give us the final number for that?
No, later than October 13th. So they'll be mailing them no later than October 13th, so probably the week after.
Also, I had a question, too. Sometimes in the past, we've received a donation to the police department. Has that happened this year? Not yet, don't know.
It hasn't happened yet, and I do not know.
Okay. I'm just curious about when you're planning this.
Another question here, just quickly. So, you know, the biggest numbers on this, on this table are the employee merit increase and the cost of living increase. Maybe, Jessica has a question for you, or maybe, Chris, you can address this. I want to get a better understanding. Does the staff sort of expect that, is this something that is a norm for us, that they would get, you know, on average, this 20 and a half percent merit increase and all that? And if yes, then, you know, how are you planning to talk to them? Because they may ask that question. So what is the plan there?
Jessica, why don't you start first with sort of some of your responses to other council members who have a very similar and very appropriate question along those lines, and then I can talk a little bit about maybe how we might roll it out.
So I believe staff is aware of the budget restrictions that we're under right now because of COVID. We've been stressing to staff, only spend what you have to spend this year. If it can be delayed, let's delay it, just to try to see. So they're aware of our budget constraints that we have this year and potentially next year. With that, they're understanding. We haven't had to furlough at all this year, as some other jurisdictions have had to furlough a few days. We haven't had to do that. We haven't made any cuts to positions, so we haven't hired anybody, eliminated any positions. I think they're happy that we're, that we have in the budget some type of increase. Will you have a disgruntled employee here and there? Probably. That, like I told Councilor Blum when we met, that same person might still be upset if they got a 3% increase, why didn't I get a 4% increase? So for the most part, we're all very aware of the budget constraints and happy to get the 1%. So staff is very understanding that that might be all that they can get, especially with surrounding jurisdictions not doing anything.
Okay, thank you.
And I would add on to that, I agree completely. And, you know, I think putting those cuts on there is not something we did lightly. We did quite a bit of research about what other jurisdictions are doing in regards to this. The reality is that our pay is one of the main reasons or ways that we will either stay attractive or become less so. And so, you know, we have a quality staff right now. And I think everybody here wants to ensure that we're doing everything we can to keep that quality staff. So we looked at a lot of other jurisdictions. We actually have it, if you want to see it, there it is, right there. So we, you know, we wanted to make sure, what were we doing from a competitive perspective on making sure that we weren't falling out of line? We actually got a ton more than this even. We just narrowed this down to ones that were in the metro area. As you can see, we are not alone with these budget concerns. And so when we started this process, it was really at a 0% increase. And really thanks to the excellent work by the folks that you have here, by the staff that you have right over there, the three of them, we were able to make some additional, shuffle some things around and get at least to a 1% cost of living. And when you compare that to our colleagues, you know, I think that's actually great news. As troubling as it may sound at first blush, you know, I'm proud of us being able to do that. And that's really what we would try and roll out, maybe through a, you know, an all-hands kind of meeting format, something. But I do think it's critical that the communication about this is clear and robust so that folks understand this was not done lightly, and we do value them. That's why we work so hard to do the 1%. With that said, you know, if we get our numbers back, and it turns out to be, you know, a little higher than we have today, and we have an option to add some things back in, and I know Jay and the chief are prepared to talk about this as well, if council wants our recommendations, you know, I think that those salary increases may be one place we would start, not to go back up to what we had this year by any stretch, but just anything we could do to add that to that 1%, a little bit, 1 and 1/2%, something along those lines, 2%. That might be advisable than some of these other discretionary items that were on that list of what we cut. So, you know, that would be our recommendation. The reason I think we're pausing here is because this is an unusual presentation from a staff perspective. We don't normally show you all the cuts and keeps. We just show you a balanced budget. And so because it is unusual, we wanted to give you a chance to ask questions and give us feedback on these specific slides so that, you know, when we do get our numbers, we'll be able to be a little bit more nimble with how we put that together for the first reading.
Chris, I think you're absolutely right that we have a terrific staff, and retention is, of course, part of having a terrific staff, you know, getting good people and have them stable. This is interesting, but it seems to me the other piece of this is, how do we compare patrol officer to patrol officer? Or, you know, you could go down the list of employee types or job titles, you know, and how are we comparing against our neighboring municipalities? And I think that's important to really understand, you know. If we were in a catch-up-ball mode, might have one reaction to the adjustment on merit increases. If we were in a very generous, in comparison, a very generous mode, then I think it'd be a little different, like, okay, we could afford to take a little time off, if you will, given the circumstances. So can you help us with that, you know, if we go forward and, well, to evaluate this properly?
Sure. And I know Catherine in HR, we do, she does a survey every year that looks at how we compare for this exact reason. You know, and I know that, and we certainly can help provide that, you know, on a generalized basis. Obviously, we're not going to try and send folks individual salaries or anything, but we can certainly provide some overviews and generalities about how we compare to our, to these similar neighbors. You know, I think if we were to generalize overall, you know, I don't think we are at the top. I don't think we are number one by any stretch. But, you know, we're certainly not muddling along either. I think we do compensate, we have less opportunities for upward mobility, and so I think you have to compensate for that a little bit through a little higher pay, and I think we do that for the most part. I'm going to look at the three of you just to fill in any gaps here on my general, sweeping broad generalizations. But, you know, and especially if you're aware of any survey work that Catherine's done that could inform this.
We, as the city manager mentioned, we do salary surveys. We look at CML, we look at surrounding jurisdictions as well. It goes around my list serve, the finance director list serve, it goes around Catherine's list serve. We're at 80% as compared to the people that responded to the CML survey right now for the police department and for administrative staff as well. So we try to match the positions as closely as we can. We get job descriptions and look to see if we have, some of them are right-of-way coordinators. A little more difficult, that's, not every jurisdiction has that, so those ones might be a little skewed. But city clerks and municipal court clerks are the same across the board. So if I remember correctly, we did it about a month and a half ago. I want to say it was 80%. So like the city manager said, not the top, but not the bottom is either.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just a more of a general question. So, you know, we know what our budget is when things are normal, the normal years.
Yeah.
We also, this year, have experienced when things are not normal for six, seven, eight months. By the end of the year, we know, right, for seven, eight months of things not being normal. So the budget that you guys are projecting, is it, the difference that you're trying to come up with, whatever that number is, 200, 300K, whatever it is, is it a difference between normal minus what is not normal based on this year's experience? The reason I ask is that, you know, going to next year, we're probably going to have several months of things not being normal. It's going to continue. So how did you come up as how much to, how much to cut? Was it this is how much we want to cut as max? Or is it that there was a logic behind the numbers that you tried to cut out?
It was more based on the preliminary, the best number that Arapahoe County could provide us for property tax revenue, since that's the driving force behind our revenue. There were some other things, our interest, the city's investment accounts, obviously we had to cut back on that. We're not seeing the interest that we saw last year or even earlier this year. So little things like that were cut, but the biggest thing was the property tax, the assessed values coming back lower than, than last year, than in 2020. So looking at that, we had to make some cuts to balance the budget. So that was the driving force.
And I'll just add to that, the number, though, that we got is not our normal number that we would have for you at tonight's study session. The number we got for you is, was a person in the Arapahoe County office looking at a few key indicators, giving us their best guess of what they think the number is going to be. That's why we're spending some time talking to you about what we kept and what we cut, so that when we do get that much more refined number, we'll be better able to accommodate your direction for first reading. That's really what's driving 90% of this conversation tonight.
Thank you.
And I think I would add that we look at, we're trends in building permits, trends in tickets from the police. It's harder for them to just make stops all the time because of the precautions they have to take and those type of things. So we're looking at all those trends. It's not just a, here's worst-case scenario. We're trying to keep those trends in mind, too. So we do present you with something that's real, as real as we can get it right now.
So Jay, that's a great segue. So my question, which I think is kind of the underlying obvious question, is, does this really have anything to do with the coronavirus? Or is it really just that this is, I mean, this is how the property tax picture looks in Colorado, depending upon what happens, you know, in November? But, I mean, since we're so property tax-driven, I don't want any of us to, oh, well, it's COVID and it's a hard year. And to be honest, I don't want to, I don't want to give that message to our employees either. If it really is just a result of, you know, the trend in property taxes, then I think we have to be upfront with that. It just reminds me of, you know, back when oil prices were through the roof 10 years ago, our trash collection company added a fuel surcharge, and it's still there, even though, you know, oil prices were at an all-time low six months ago. So I don't want to tell people, oh, you know, we've got to make these cuts because of coronavirus, and then next year they're there, and the year after that, they're there. And we all have to be upfront about what's driving these choices, that were, you know, tough choices that we have to make. And they're not going to go away, you know, in a year unless, well, they won't even go away in a year, no matter what, but they might go away in two years if the repeal of Gallagher passes in November.
Katie, I think that's a very good point. There is some, there is some effect by the COVID. If you look at the, for example, sales tax numbers, Jessica and I spent a lot of time on this, and there are certain areas that do contribute to that. But obviously, the biggest thing is what Michael did, the Gallagher amendment. We'll see what happens come November. But other than that, there are minor effects, I think, of COVID that are reflected in there. You can't blame everything on it, but there are some minor effects.
Yeah, and some of that's reflected in these. Like, I can give you some background. Inglewood is surprising in their sales tax revenue because their restaurant went down, but they don't have that much, but their marijuana went way up and their bar, and their liquor sales. So it was like, ooh, more than made up for the losses. And, well, Castle Pines obviously doesn't have a sales tax. But yeah, that's, our use tax, our use tax for vehicles, I know that you're anticipating that's going to be lower, so maybe that, that's a conservative figure I think you took there, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
But, and our use tax from the checks we get from Amazon is actually better than last, it improved, right?
Right. Yeah, I, Amazon, the checks, the remittances that we're getting from Amazon have increased. So perhaps with more people staying home, ordering more on Amazon, those have gone up. But yes, so small things, like the mayor mentioned, use tax, we did reduce use tax based on just initial projections that we've seen so far. And it's possible those numbers can go back up towards the end of the year, and maybe we adjust that for first or second reading. But for right now, I think it's prudent to be, to keep it lower, just in case not as many residents are buying vehicles.
And the other point that I know I discussed when I met with Chris and Jay, is that, you know, there, my first question was obviously, is there any big ticket item? Because those salary cuts are a big number. You know, it's, we can't just say we're not going to buy paper clips next year and make up for that. So, you know, was there anything? And, because I feel like it's a hard message, some of these things on here, oh, we're going to chip seal the streets, but you're not going to get a raise. And it's just important to know that they're in different funds and they have different purposes. And so you really have to find those savings in the general fund, and that's just, you know, hard to do. It's just hard to do. I think it, so.
These would be the items that we're still paying for, even though, you know, those other cuts may be in effect. So this would be the slide I think that, that would resonate the most.
And if we cut all of those, that's, I mean, it might help, you know, make a little more, but it, the salary line item was like 130, something, 135?
Right.
So we could, you know, 125, we could, and then plus, you know, another 40, so 165, and increases, you know, we could zero out all of those and still only get a quarter of the way, so.
And it would be possible if we wanted to increase cost of living from 1% to 2%, which would be the $39,000. So if we completely eliminated this list, that's possible.
I think that makes a lot of sense, to use that money exactly for that purpose. You've got 40 and 40, and they match up well, and use that moving cost of living from 1% to 2%.
Well, I would prefer we think about, if we're going to move money, like negate this list or zero out this list, I'd rather see it go into performance and reward for performance of the merit budget than just smear it around evenly. Reward your stars and...
If I may respond to that, there are some people that are topped out. They're not allowed to get a merit increase because they're at the top of their pay range. So we left it deliberately as a cost of living, because those employees will get cost of living, but they won't get merit. And we have several administrative staff and some police officers and sergeants that are at the top of their pay scale. So with a merit increase, they do not get a merit increase. They would only get the cost of living increase. So leaving it at a 1% or a 2%, they can take full advantage of that. If we split it, one for merit, one for cost of living, they'd only be eligible for the 1% cost of living. Does that make sense?
So we don't adjust the scales?
It adjusts by cost of living only.
To cost of living?
Mm-hmm.
That's something I might consider doing.
You know, for me, you know, I can't remember, I think you proposed this, Chris, earlier. The idea, you guys have spent a lot of time, obviously nickel and diming, and thank you, to try to come up with a, you know, where we can cut. Some are very large number, and some, yeah, $1,000 here and there. And to me, you've gone through this methodically to come up with these numbers. I don't want to just throw it out there. I don't want to just throw it out the, out the door. And to me, you know, I like the idea of sticking with this because the staff that actually do the work and deliver have come out with this. We didn't force it on you. You have come out with it voluntarily and we appreciate it. And what we should, I think, as a council, make a commitment to the staff that we should have a hard look more toward the, and, you know, once the numbers start coming in, the budget coming in. And, and as we're raising, as we're collecting tax and everything. And if we can justify it up to the numbers that we normally give in terms of merit increase, as well as the cost of living, you know, try to meet that. We may, we may not. But to me, rather than right now trying to make a decision based on some things that are still unknown, to me, this is great. Let's move on with it and we, you guys are going to refine a little bit more. And then more toward the middle of the year sometime, we've got a sort of a, sort of a timeline that we're going to look at this and see, can we go ahead and provide the normal increases that the staff deserves, to be honest with you, for this city? So I'll leave it as that.
I would agree that if, if we end up having more money, the first thing that I would say, would like to see come back is increases. And I, to your point, the cost of living increase to be sort of fully funded. I understand your point, Randy, but I, I guess in talk and hearing that, I would fully fund the cost of living increase first and then look at, um, the merit increases in addition to that. And then my third priority, if, if there was more on top of that, would be to put that tuition reimbursement back. You know, I just, having kids in school right now, I think it just sucks to hear, oh, it's just the wrong year. Like, too bad. You know, you're, you're graduating in the wrong year, you're doing whatever it is you're doing in the wrong year. And it's, um, it just kind of breaks my heart to have to tell that to people.
Well, i- i- if you recall, and you don't need to go back, Jessica, but on the list of the other communities, there were more than just one who are doing a mid-year evaluation based on revenues that they see coming in. I've never seen it like that, that widespread. And it's simply because we're in such uncharted territory that, that overused phrase that we all keep using. Um, I, I think that exists here and, and I actually think we have a particularly good reason to reevaluate maybe mid-year. Because it is not looking like we are going to get the building permit for the country club. If you recall, we got a one percent valuation of a fifty-five million dollar project. That is certainly also unusual, uh, and that may be coming in next year. So that might be a good reason to evaluate mid-year also. So that, that would be another sort of idea that we've kicked around that clearly other communities have not just kicked around, but are, have decided they are going to do. So it might be something for council.
A lot of mayors talked about that and doing that. That makes a lot of sense in this, in this kind of situation. Gallagher won't make a difference though. Regardless of how it goes, it, it wouldn't even kick in until two years from now.
But I do think, you know, when you're looking at a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, I guess that was the merit increases. You're looking at forty for the cost of living, right? So I, I think it's highly possible that just the, the property tax estimate is off by plus or minus forty. Let's hope it's plus. So I mean, when you look at how it changes from year to year before that, you know, one year it's fairly consistent, then it jumps up obviously because the assessments only happen, um, but, or the val, yeah, the valuations only happen every other year. But, so I think that that's, you know, I think not even waiting until, hopefully we can make some adjustments by first reading as well. And if not, then, you know, maybe making a commitment to look at it mid-year is, is the next best.
Jessica, I have a question regarding the health insurance increases.
Yes.
If I'm an employee and there's an eight percent health insurance increase, what is my out of pocket increase going to be, given that pricing difference?
Right now, the city's projecting to absorb that full increase. We, the employees will not have any increase to their health or their dental. We're, uh, unless it goes higher than the eight percent and the five percent, that might be something that we, that the city manager and I have to discuss and, and bring back to council at first reading. But at this point, the city is absorbing that full cost. So staff is not having increased costs for them.
One thing that I found to build on what you, what Mark you said, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but, um, one thing I want to, I want to add is, you know, for, that happens everywhere, right? And I think it's so important that the employees know, know that, that this is the increase and we absorbed it. So, you know, yeah, we might not at this point give you that additional cost of living, you know, increase, but this is actually, you don't pay even taxes on this thing. So it's important to communicate those and I assume you guys do that anyway, right?
Yes.
To, to, to add on to that, just a quick aside, because, because I, I, it sounds like we're getting some good input and we'll probably be able to move on to the other funds. I was at a city manager luncheon and I heard from two city managers who got an earful because they were providing a zero percent pay increase and they weren't covering all of the cost of the health insurance increase. So their employees were just letting them have it because they basically were taking a pay cut. And then there was one in particular said it, and that was on top of the four furlough days. So it was, you know, that's, that's tough. And I think that's the kind of messaging we need to talk about, that we're, we're working hard to keep, keep them from being, keeping us from being in that position. So I, point, very well made.
And the last thing I want to mention, I'm not sure if this is applicable to, for city government. You can do that, but for example, my, all of my employees, I show, this is your base salary. This is the cost of us employing you and everything else. So every year when they get that increase, they will see that, you know, there's quite a bit of just beyond a salary.
And, and we do that as well. At the end of the year, we give the employees a, a compensation form where they, they see exactly what the city paid for their benefits and, and what their salary is, all of that. Okay. Let me get to the right slide. Okay, so starting with the proposed capital expenditures. The proposed capital expenditures for the administration department includes a replacement server. The useful life of a server is five years. And the server that's been recommended for replacement is six years old. So it will need to be replaced either in twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two. The capital fund expenditures for the police department include a new Ford Explorer and equipment for the new vehicle, which is approximately sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the proposed capital fund expenditures for the public works department include street improvement projects, the Bellevue Island at Cherry Hills Farm project, a replacement pickup truck and trailer, a new skid steer, communication headsets, paint sprayer, and a stormwater mapping project.
Jessica, a question on the, if you go back a slide, um, the Bellevue Island at Cherry Hills Farm, is that a participation with the homeowners or is that strictly our portion out? Do we have any estimates?
Right, right now, that's just a placeholder. That's the estimate for the entire project.
Are we going to meet with the, uh, with the homeowners to see if they're going to participate?
Yes, Councilor Wheel and I will, uh, meet, we're, we're meeting with CDOT first to see if we can, um, get a better idea as for their requirements for our design for that. It's more of just a pavement remove and replace. But right now with the way CDOT has their requirements written, we would still need environmental, historical, all these different things that even though we're not going deeper than ten inches, that they're still requiring. So we're going to try to meet with them and see if we can bring that down. But.
Without, without the CDOT issues, it would be a lot less, wouldn't it? We're talking about.
Yeah. If, if that was on a city, if that was on a city street, you know, we wouldn't require a full set of plans. We could go in there with our staff, tear it out and it would be the cost of the materials. But, um, so about forty-five thousand of that is design. The rest is construction and mobilization and traffic control. But that's just the whole number right now. We haven't got to the point of how much would the HOA and kick in and, and what would council be safe with?
Al, that, um, I'm hoping that there's room for material improvement when we talk to CDOT because, you know, we're not digging into the ground. We're just removing what's already, what other people dug a long time ago. So I don't know about historic, uh, surveys and other things that were built in. The, and I believe the homeowners association is, is prepared and, and, you know, willing to kick in. First step, we got to get a final number or a number that's a little more reasonable perhaps. Uh, and then, and then we can approach them with what, you know, what to do.
Okay.
Is this, is the number at one eighty-five, or I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the three hundred and twenty thousand for street, is that chip seal, Jay, or is that?
Yes, that's the, the chip seal budget.
And then how is that in accordance with your long range plan? Is that the same as you were planning? Is it reduced? Is it?
That, that's the same as we were planning. This in twenty twenty was a, a higher number and we planned for that because of Quincy and Colorado and Holly were involved. This is more a, a normal year for our, this is right on the budget for keeping up with our maintenance.
And that's what shows on the map, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's just remarkably inexpensive. To tell you the truth, I, I'm kind of amazed that you can do all that work for that little amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Especially when you look at the quality of what we get from.
Correct.
It is first class and you know it the minute you drive in.
To continue with the proposed capital fund expenditures, the proposed capital fund expenditures for the parks division includes chip sealing the bike trails, a replacement mower and trailer, and a soil conditioner. And the miscellaneous capital fund expenditures that are included in the budget include the city's portion for the US two eighty-five congestion mitigation study and the High Line Canal stormwater study. Capital improvement.
Jessica, could you explain the, do we have any choice on that study, on the two eighty-five study?
No, no, it's already committed.
I don't.
We committed in twenty eighteen.
We committed, um, in twenty eighteen.
And that's a small part of it.
It's a big study.
So all the municipalities?
Well, Inglewood mainly.
Denver, Denver and.
Denver, I think Sheridan is involved.
Yeah, Sheridan too.
So I guess, um, as I look at that, what I would say is, um, you know, in terms of placeholders, when I look at the capital fund balance projecting forward, obviously it, it makes me a little more conscientious of what we're spending now. Um, because, you know, starting in twenty twenty-six, so five years from this budget, um, we have to start contributing from the general fund to the capital fund. Uh, and so what I would say is for the, going back to the, um, Bellevue median, I think that we could lower that placeholder. I guess what I would say is if it's going to cost a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, I don't know that I would be in favor of doing that. So I, I would be in favor of putting a potentially lower number in. And if we can get it to come in for whatever that lower number is, um, but that's one of those things that I just don't know that I can, you know, look, look at somebody and say, we spent a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars on that versus, um, you know, some of these other things in, in a future year. Um, because particularly, right now, it's coming out of capital funds. And so it's not coming out of, you know, pay increases or whatever. But in twenty twenty-six, it could be, right? The three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars that's projected to have to be transferred, uh, in, wait, is that the right number? Yeah. That's projected to have to be transferred in from general funds. That will be funds that could then no longer be used for pay increases or, uh, and so I, I just would have a hard time looking somebody in the face and saying, yeah, sorry. We, but we did, you know, put, do a median five years ago.
Would you feel more comfortable if you just said the city would contribute either a percentage or just X number of dollars, no matter what the cost? And if the HOA wanted to come up with the rest, then?
I, I mean, I just think that there, we could put a, a smaller number. I don't know exactly what the number is. You know, kind of a number that if it's more than this, we, we wouldn't really do it. And I know, Randy, this is something that, and I think it's a great idea. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on what that number might be, but I.
No, I'm kind of in the, in the place where I was startled by the one eighty-five regardless of who pays for it. This went from fifty to a hundred to a hundred and eighty-five and I'm having to.
Thanks, CDOT.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm having to, uh, explain this and it's not easy. So no, I, I don't, I don't have a problem. I mean, if, if we wanted to knock, even to knock this down to a hundred or half of the hundred eighty-five, I think that's a reasonable thing because regardless of who pays for it, I, I, it, it just is a lot of money from, you know, for, for the work that's being done. My hope is that when we sit down with CDOT and really explain the project in some detail, and I may be too much of a Pollyanna, but, uh, but, uh, you know, that reasonable thoughts will prevail and we'll get some of this stuff out of it and bring it in at a lower aggregate.
I, I think Jay will do a great job with CDOT because I've been there before with him. But my question is, Jay, from a timing standpoint, if you know you're going to have to do environmental studies and stuff, is this something that really belongs in the twenty twenty-one budget? Are we really looking at twenty twenty-two? Cause if so, if we're looking at twenty twenty-two, I'd eliminate the whole thing right now.
Yeah, um, thinking about that and, and going through the CDOT process, it, it might make more sense to maybe put some planning dollars in here, um, for the designing type stuff and then commit to that construction in the future if we want to move forward with that. That's.
I would suggest that. I think that, Randy, we know we want to get it done.
Well, it, it, I think it kind of depends, Al, on how much of the planning stuff we might be able to move aside.
Yeah, and we won't, we haven't talked to CDOT yet.
When we could actually do it.
Well, I, I think the planning we're going to spend anyway to get it done. And my only question is timing. If it's really going to be a project in twenty twenty-two, let's not put it in the twenty twenty-one budget. Let's plan for it. But knowing the, with the time we spent screwing around with a stoplight took years and knowing dealing with CDOT, you may be looking at twenty twenty-two, uh, as long as it gets done. And, and I'm sure the HOA will contribute. But I think maybe we ought to bump this back to twenty twenty-two, put money in there for planning. Jay, I don't know what you're talking about for design and planning and dealing with CDOT, environmental studies, all that. But with, with some type of number for that, I would put it in there this year and then look at twenty twenty-two.
I think if we put forty-five thousand dollars for, for that, that's, and again, those are assumptions we've made. We haven't talked to CDOT, but our engineer who works with CDOT all the time says, you know, we did a similar project and here's what they required. So right now, that's what we're holding. But so forty-five thousand would be plenty to do the preliminary and get to a point where we're ready to, uh, you know, put it out to bid right away in, uh, twenty twenty-two.
And then you may, may have a, a reasonable commitment. I'm sure Randy will work on it to get a commitment from the HOA to participate, some number, whatever it's going to be that the city participates with them. I think it's a wise move to, to put the money in there for planning and defer twenty twenty-two expenditure.
I think, you know, it, in fact, the, um, the argument for a hundred eighty-five is we don't have to do a supplemental appropriation. We could always do a, if, if lightning strikes and we, and we say, wow, everything is coming together, we can get it in for cheap sooner, then we can do supplemental appropriation. This, if, if you do it now, you're not, we're not committing to do it for a hundred eighty-five if we do this. All we're saying is that's the maximum we could spend. So we could do it, anything less than that. And obviously we could always say no too. But this just, so without understanding, yeah. It sounds, I, I doubt too that knowing how CDOT works on our other issue, how long it's taken us on all the other.
I can't even get a permit to paint this, let alone dig in it.
So I think it's not, I think it's not realistic, so.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with any of those. I guess that was just my point was that if it's a hundred eighty-five, then the answer's no. So, you know, I'm comfortable putting, I, I'm comfortable, you know, putting forty-five in now and, and I didn't even say, why don't we say fifty? Cause you said that was the first number you got, Randy. Maybe we can actually get it done for that, who knows?
Oh, I doubt that. But even so, it, it would cover the planning and that gets that out of the way. And maybe I'm still too optimistic.
Randy will cover the rest.
Yeah. All right.
So just, just so we know for the first reading, uh, it sounds like we're going to be changing the, the project capital expenditure to go from the one eighty-five to the fifty. Anybody heartburn with that approach?
Yeah, I think that's the consensus here and maybe describe it as a planning, planning grant or planning.
Design. Okay.
Plan and design.
Okay, so we'll move on to the small fund highlights. The Conservation Trust Fund includes general trail improvements that's estimated at twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. The Catherine Anderson Land Donation Fund. The Katherine Anderson Land Donation Fund has Quincy Farm general fund maintenance for $25,000 and the Highline Conservancy support at $15,000. The, of course.
If, go back to that, I just want to say, because I don't remember the last time we had this conversation, not saying in favor or against, but just so that everyone knows, the Highline Conservancy support is optional. And we have had conversations in the past about whether to continue to do that. That is not a commitment that, it's not a long-term commitment. It's an annual commitment, and the Highline comes and asks for that support. So again, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't. But I do recall, maybe three, four years ago, there was conversation about, you know, at, at what level is it appropriate to us, for us to participate in that based on the size of our jurisdiction and community compared to the other communities that participate in all of that? So just want to say that, you know, that discussion has taken place in the past, and that's.
It probably should take place again this year. We probably ought to reach out to Harriet. I don't think anybody's talked to her about what, whether she wants it again, if she, what she's, what the Conservancy. Well, you never, you never know unless she asks, huh?
Just, just as a little bit of context, just last week, or yesterday, actually. Ah, time, time is, is moving oddly these days. Yesterday, Emily, Jay and I had a great call with the Conservancy about the changes that, you know, this is a transition year for, for them. And especially with Denver Water enacting sort of a new approach towards maintenance. The entire governance structure of the Conservancy is really evolving this year. And so that may result in changes for not only us, but everybody with their funding structure. So that would probably be an excellent, you know, discussion over the next year, so that the next budget year, we could, you know, sort of either support or recommend changes to that particular line item. I think that's an excellent timing point.
She, I'm sure she'd be happy to come in and speak to us on the next, next session.
I mean, that's another one where I, I kind of feel like the, the approach during a year like this is that everybody has to share in the pain. I mean, every individual, every person, every employee, every business, every, everything has been impacted. And so I, you know, we, we just all have to share in the pain, one way or another.
Let me ask a question, this is off, off the thing, but talking about the Three Pond Park water, the Denver Water Rights for Katherine, for the Quincy Farm. I drove by Three Pond's Lake and it looks like the Dead Sea. So is there a problem filling that, or is there, what's, you know the status of that?
Well, the big pond is a private pond, but that's what our, the $25,000 for, I forgot where that was. We do have money in there for study of the recommend, recommended improvements from the stormwater study that was done on the Highline. And that's probably our first project to look at. But in 2021, we'd like to hire a consultant to lay out all those projects for us that are listed in that master plan and get a good ground idea of which one should we be doing first. But that Three Pond one is, is high on the list.
Jessica, why is the, the budget for general maintenance 25,000 as opposed to prior years 100?
We've left it at general maintenance to cover any expenditures that might come up with the property itself. So not, not employee time, but just if they have to go to Home Depot and buy some lumber or equipment for maintenance.
The 25,000 is about, is a good average number of what it costs for us to maintain it as it is right now. With very limited use. It keeps the grounds maintained, it keeps the lights on, it keeps the heat running so we don't freeze water, maintenance on the other buildings. So that's, that's an average of what we spend a year.
And any life safety?
Yeah, life safety.
Life safety issues that matterize.
In the, in the previous budgets, it's been looking at doing improvements. This is not doing improvements. This is just maintaining its status quo.
So things like the, putting the sewer in and all those were in prior.
Those were in prior years.
Why that number is higher.
Correct.
From prior years.
Yes.
And actually, as I'm looking at this, the Highline Conservancy support in, in this document is only 10,000, not 15. Which seems like what we have approved in the past.
I might have a typo on mine.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah, in my PowerPoint, so. But I will, I will double check that number and make sure.
But that definitely, you know, my, when I saw that, I was like, wow, that seems higher than what we've given in the past. We probably could go back to 10. It turns out it already is at 10. So, but either way.
That's how responsive we are as staff. We can immediately make that.
Okay, we have just five minutes. I want to make sure that you have a chance to finish.
If I can skip briefly to the Parks and Recreation Fund. The, there are a few additional items in, in the Parks and Recreation Fund. The $60,000 for the Bellevue Median Maintenance, we didn't have to do that in 2020. We will have to do that in 2021. There's John Mead Park Goose Control, Pond Vegetation, and Restroom Contract Services that have been included. There's also a $10,000 carryover from the Cherry Hills Village Art Commission. The commission envisions using the carryover funds to purchase a permanent sculpture for John Mead Park. So that has been included in the Parks and Recreation Fund for 2021 as well.
What's the, the goose control is the dogs?
Yes.
Yes, that's to have the dogs. It's, it's, yes.
I'll owe my dog for 9,000, 9, or for 14,500.
It, it seemed very expensive, but it cost us about half of that to replant the native seed that was ruined by the geese. So the contractor has been paying for that up until now, and we would like to continue that. It's been a great, great way to keep the sidewalks clean here at City Hall and get that grass established. It's, it's really helped.
If you've ever seen them work, it's, it's truly amazing.
And they actually have quite a bit of cost, right, Jay? They have to be licensed through the state. They have to be bonded for any damage that they do. It's not, it seems so easy. Just let a dog out, but.
I, my dog wouldn't do anything.
They, they are well-trained. We have the same, we have the same ones at Glenmore, and they're well-trained and they're very effective.
You can talk to Denver about their goose. Feed, feed, feed the homeless project. Okay.
Yes, so I just want to thank council for your feedback. We'll, we'll take everything that, that you said to us today and we'll incorporate that into the first reading and present those changes to you for first reading.
Mayor, I'd like to thank Jessica, did a great job. And I'd like to thank my fellow councilmen who gave their respective feedback to the various, various parts of the city that, that was very helpful.
Yeah, thanks for meeting with us, Jessica. That was awesome. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I think.
What's, the pleasure of council. Go ahead and start at 6:30. You want to take a quick break?
I would recommend a real quick break, just to make sure that we can get everything set up for the presentation portion of the evening.
Okay, we'll take a three-minute break, or four.